Good evening. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, April 6th, and I call to order this regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. Attending this evening's virtual board meeting are Board members Paula Cole, Christine Malik, Tim Polis, Allegra Smitschek, and Peter Tensing, and I am Crystal Brackey. I am thrilled that we have student board members with us this evening, Diani Museo and Naomi Ferguson, and we expect that Lucy Luna will also be joining us. We also have Superintendent Unowski and district staff members on the line who you will hear from later this evening. This is our first ever virtual board meeting as allowed by Minnesota State Statute 13D.021 in light of the peacetime state of emergency shared by Governor Walz due to the COVID-19 pandemic. One of our agenda items later in the meeting will be to declare that board meetings will be virtually without further notice. As we are adjusting to this new way of meeting, we ask for your patience and probably a little bit of good humor as well as we know there will be bumps in the road with both technology and in our own comfort participating and conducting business virtually. So as the board chair, I will be using several kind of new and different feeling measures to try and ease this transition. So first, after non-routine presentations or business items, I will call on each board member individually for questions or comments just to make sure that everybody has a chance to participate without speaking over each other. If a board member has none, then they should just come off mute and say pass or, you know, I'm good, whatever moves you. After each board member has had their turn to be called on, I will also just make one final open call for questions or comments that may have come up since a board member's turn before any action is taken. So secondly, as required by statute, any action taken by the board in virtual meetings will be conducted via roll call vote. So as such, I will call on each board member individually and in alphabetical order so that their yea, nay, or abstain vote can be heard and individually recorded. So I would say in short, there is going to feel like there's a lot of repetition in this first virtual board meeting, I suspect, and there is going to be more of me talking and kind of managing the meeting than what I would generally enjoy or prefer doing. But we have heard from our fellow school board colleagues who have held virtual meetings over the last few weeks already that this is a helpful and important way to start this new process and new way of meeting until we get used to it. So hopefully, as we do get more comfortable meeting virtually in the future, you will hear less of me and more of everyone else as we hold these meetings. So finally, as we conduct this meeting from each one of our homes, which you see in the background, we will absolutely continue to stay focused on Richfield Public Schools' mission statement that we inspire and empower each individual to learn, grow, and excel. It is more important now than ever to stay centered on what we are here to do. And to that end, I also just want to appreciate anyone following along with our meeting live this evening via YouTube or watching in the future. Thank you so much for being with us and for your commitment to our community. So with all of that preamble, our first item of business this evening is to approve the agenda before us. And since this is a routine business item, I will not individually call on board members to see if there are questions or comments, but rather just do an open initial ask if there are any questions related to the agenda itself. Giving some white time, but seeing and hearing none, is anyone prepared to move the agenda as presented?
I'll move the agenda as presented.
I'm second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Ms. Cole. Any final discussion? And we will conduct a roll call vote to approve the agenda. Cole?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Polis?
Aye.
Smitschek?
Aye.
Tensing?
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the agenda is approved. So we now move into the information and proposals, non-action items section of the agenda, which this evening contains two items in the superintendent's update. Before I turn things over to Steve, I wanted to share that the next opportunity for public comment will be at our board meeting on Monday, April 20th. So if there is a member of the public who wishes to address the board at that time, we ask that you contact me as board chair directly so we can accommodate you in this virtual meeting environment. And we'll actually probably talk about that in a couple of minutes in a later agenda item. But just so everybody knows, my contact information is available on the richfieldschools.org website under the school board page. So we are going to continue to have public comment opportunity and we're just going to figure out how to incorporate that in this new way of meeting. So now I will turn things over to Superintendent Unowski.
Thank you, Crystal. Just a summary of some of the things that we have been going through, really two things in the superintendent update. One, an update on education in the world of coronavirus and where we are now. And then we'll move on to a budget update. And so I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the things that we have been working on over these past three weeks to make sure that we are prepared to have every one of our students learn, grow, and excel as we try to introduce distance learning and education by a very different model. It began actually three weeks ago with the governor shutting down schools for eight days to plan for distance learning. And the first day of that week, Monday, we actually had students in school. But shortly thereafter, by Wednesday, we had food delivery beginning and childcare beginning. And this was to meet some of the governor's expectations of providing childcare to workers of essential roles and then also making sure we were able to distribute food within our community. And so we have food being distributed on nine bus routes and every single one of our school sites, although STEM and RDLs are doing a combined campus. We are working together with Fun Club to provide childcare at three sites. And that has, both of those things have occurred over the entire three weeks. In the eight days after we began that, we began planning for distance learning and learning in a way where our students aren't in front of us and our teachers aren't necessarily in their classrooms. So it really began making sure that everyone had all of the materials that they needed to be successful. And so we worked with our Chromebooks as a one-to-one in secondary district and two-to-one in elementary to make sure that we had computer technology in the hands of all of our students and anyone who needed it. We also recognized the need for Wi-Fi and have worked to get resources and Wi-Fi out as much as possible. And then there are also families that don't have access or interested in Wi-Fi. And we worked to distribute books where appropriate as much as we could. We also worked to distribute materials and materials to support learning in all of our classrooms and all of our buildings. Then we distributed packets, packets to support learning and supplement learning. And then we also have beginning this week, additional packets that will go out for those not wanting to engage online. As we launched school today, the day after spring break, we have all of our schools fully engaged in teaching online. There are two different types of teaching that occurs. One is called asynchronous, which means they don't all have to be there at the same time. And one is called synchronous, which is holding a class or a meeting much like we are. We are currently in a synchronous meeting, all of us here together. Much of our learning has been asynchronous, recognizing that families and students and teachers in this scenario may not be able to all engage at the same time. And so we are using online tools to create lessons that are up and accessible throughout the day and throughout the week. And we're also using methods to support watching, monitoring, and supporting students in their engagement and their learning. And so what we're working on is daily attendance and daily engagement where students are checking in, learning, engaging with the lesson online. Or for those who are not, engaging in their packets and engaging in the work that we've sent home to send pictures to us and to send information and documentation to the best extent possible. Where we don't have that in place, we also then have social workers, outreach workers, and teachers calling to follow up with students to see what help can we give and what extra support can we give in terms of one-on-one support, making sure students are able to learn and able to learn to the best of their ability. Today being the first day, I only have initial reports. And so I'll be as excited and interested as I'm sure you are to hear from Naomi and Diani about what their day was like. From an adult perspective, we had a very successful day. Richfield Middle School, for example, was able to track that 96.5% of their students participated in online instruction in some way, shape, or form today. There were only 35 students that were then referred on to the team that was following up to see how can we support you in engaging in online learning. And we'll continue on with that work to help students not only learn, but make sure they're able to connect with us as we move forward. Similarly, at our elementary schools, a couple of them were down to only one student who hadn't found a way to participate over the course of the day. And so we're really pleased at present as we're sure that our first step is making sure our students are able to and engaging in the lessons. And from there, we're going to obviously evolve into how do we make sure that they are learning? Obviously, we know based on the governor that this will extend until at least May 5th. As a reminder, the current proclamation is for shelter in place until at least this Friday and for us to be in distance learning through May 1st with two then days to plan for students to come back. Now, obviously, the governor has made changes as things go along. And so we are planning for the possibility of distance learning the entire school year and hopeful that when we get towards that end of April, we hear some positive news about our ability. But our goal in this time is to continue distance learning as well as we can and continue prepping for regardless of what our outcome is. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Crystal, who can tell us which of the two students will go first, and we'll hear from Naomi and Diani about how their day was.
Okay, we're going to let Diani go first as the high school senior on the board and knowing what a completely unexpected and I'm sure, you know, challenging twist to the end of your senior year has been like. So we are just eager to hear, first of all, how you are, how you have been doing and how the first day of distance learning has gone. So Diani, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm doing fine. I mean, I'd rather be like inside social distancing than like outside harming and risking others. So that's fine. In terms of the school, I was a little bit confused like going into this because I did get like the emails or Dr. Daniels sent out like that little YouTube video. So I did watch all that, but I was confused because Mr. Harris was the only teacher that I have that reached out in terms of like the Google Hangout meetings. Other than that, I didn't really hear from the other teachers about what to do with that. So I've kind of just been like checking as I go. So this morning, I woke up pretty early and Mr. Harris had a meeting from 11 to 12 on Google Hangouts like this. And we kind of went over like quizzes and like the tests that we have to do for that class because that class, like as a senior, my classes are basically like all online because I take like the college ones, so all the work is online anyway. So that's pretty regular. I mean, it was fine. I have noticed that the workload is more for some reason, but that's fine. It keeps me busy, so.
That is an excellent attitude to have. I also am appreciating things that just help me stay busy at this moment in time. Thank you, Diani. Naomi, how are you?
Okay. Can you guys hear me? Okay, it went pretty good today. I'm trying to make the best out of it. I don't think I realized how much I liked school until we couldn't go or how much I liked the people there. But I mean, attendance was easy this morning. You really just had to put, if you were there or not, you put yes. And then I heard from mostly all of my teachers through email, through Schoology. And then I think they're doing a really good job of like, you can reach out to them messaging through Schoology, you can email them, you can, what's it called, go in through their hours when you can like video chat with them. So I don't know. I think everybody's doing a really good job. I didn't really hear like a lot from, like a lot of work today. I didn't get a lot of work today, so I don't know how it's going to end up going as the days progress. But it was pretty good today.
Awesome. It will be really helpful to continue to hear from you all as we keep doing these virtual board meetings. So keep a running list even of things that you are experiencing and things that you think would be helpful for us to know and talk about as a board, but also for our community to hear from you all as our student board representatives. I don't think Lucy is with us. Is that correct? Okay, so now what I'm going to do is do the first go-round of individual board members for any questions or comments that they have. And Steve, I will just let you jump right in and respond as well as any members of your team that want to do so. I think we may have temporarily lost, oh, Paula just joined. Paula, I will come back to you last. We're just doing the quick whip around for questions and comments from board members related to distance learning. So Christine, you're up.
Thanks. I would just say I really appreciate their perspective and having that. And as someone that is shifting my teaching and my work to online also and dealing with those challenges, I have found that the best resource we have to make improvements is our students. So reaching out to them and making sure ideas and those perspectives get back to teachers and administration, I think, is really key that we're getting feedback on how we're doing. That was really helpful to us, so.
Thank you. We're really proud and impressed and pleased with our work and student voice and find that it absolutely will help us in this circumstance. Crystal?
All right, Tim, you're up.
I have nothing to say.
Perfect. That's a great modeling of just passing, but we're giving everybody the chance if they do have something to share. Peter?
So I want to definitely echo the appreciation for all of the work that we know goes into this. I was actually at the technology office today, working on getting my computer upgraded. And so it's evident that there, even though we're in this shelter-in-place, distance-learning mode, there are people who are working very hard to kind of make this all happen. So just echoing that appreciation for the hard work of the staff and for the dedication of the students who are bringing their best selves in. Yeah, so the only question that I have is, have we heard from the governor or from MDE about state assessment? You know, how they're planning to approach that this year?
Yes, so within the new bill, the state assessments would be waived and we are not anticipating students taking the MCA. And so we believe that that will not occur for us over the course of this year. Peter, did you have a follow-up or?
That's good. Thank you. I appreciate that. And I'm set.
Perfect. One additional response before Crystal goes to the next person. One of the things for us that has obviously been challenging is the definition and description of an essential worker. And so the terminology used by the governor, and it can be a very valuing statement and a devaluing statement, is the term essential. So first, I would start by saying that every single member of our team in Richfield Public Schools is essential. However, in this current terminology, essential means essential to physically be present in the particular building location to be able to do their job. And so we have defined our nutrition services workers, those providing childcare, one administrator per physical location to supervise in case there are issues, and then our custodians who continue to do work in the buildings as essential. We have one cabinet member on site on a daily basis as an essential worker. And then what we have told everyone else in those cases is that you only then are floating in and out of being considered essential if you are needed to come in that day to be able to do your job. And you should only be in as long as you are needed to do your job. So if a person does not have Wi-Fi at home, they might have a separate location or site within our schools where they could do their work and they would be essential for that time. If somebody needed their teacher's manual because they had forgotten one particular book, they would ideally come in, grab the teacher's manual, be essential for the few minutes that they're there, and then return back home to be able to do their job. And so we're trying to keep people as distant as possible by utilizing the terminology of the governor as essential for who you may see. And so we also, as Peter pointed out, have technology staff who are on-site on a daily basis or one person. The others are solving technology problems remotely or maybe floating in and out, but they have assigned one technology person per day. With that, Crystal, back to you.
Okay, Allegra?
Thank you. I'd like to say how proud I am of Richfield Schools and on just a lot of levels. Hearing that statistic from the middle school is not only incredible, it's in like 96.5 in that ballpark of students attended today. That's incredible. And the fact that we have that data, that the school was mindful enough to figure out how to collect the data and get a return in one day is just incredible and really helpful in future planning and being able to reach out to families that aren't connected yet. And I also just think the level of differentiation that's happening right now is amazing. I think it's so hard to differentiate for a bunch of different students' needs in a classroom. And to do that with an extra layer of them not physically being in front of you is really, really challenging. So hearing just all the ways that we're offering learning to students is encouraging. I think as time goes on, I'll be really curious about assessment since we're not having state assessments, just how we're tracking student learning and some innovation that might come out of this challenging time in that realm.
Thank you. Obviously, it's great for our staff to hear. Both Ledry and Fred and Mary are all on the phone. And also it's Mary Island and Scott. And everybody on our team has done an incredible job, going way above and beyond what is their typical role, making sure that they're organizing, systemizing, and structuring things to support all of our kids. We have been very deliberate in rolling expectations and steps out one at a time. And so one of our conversations today in our cabinet meeting was about assessment. And we are looking to about a week, week and a half to figure out really, how are we doing in our instruction, making sure that we're doing well. And I would look forward to talking about where we are, and I will absolutely do that in the future. Either at the next board meeting, we'll be ready, or the board meeting after that as we continue to make sure we're continuing to do that work. So thank you, Allegra. We appreciate it.
Okay, Paula, your turn.
All right, thank you. So I want to also say thank you. I think Richfield has done such a great job. I wish I were a teacher here and not where I teach. Sorry, Minneapolis. Having said that, I do have a few questions about distance learning. First of all, I'm a little worried about what I heard in the beginning from Steve's report about parents refusing to do online learning and how kids are receiving paper. I really don't have the creativity right now to imagine how those students with paper and distance are receiving the same instruction. And I know that's not about, you know, that's more about being equitable, but really like access to the same resources. I would think that if we are providing the resources needed that the same way that school is mandatory, that I think, I don't know. I guess this is getting me very, very weird. I have a question about, so that's number one. Number two, I want to know what's happening with students in special education. So how are we servicing students who have speech and OT and maybe PT minutes in their IPs? And also, and how are, my last question, how are English language learners being served as well? What's the relationship in the co-teaching, co-planning, and the involvement between those ESL teachers and homeroom classroom teachers? Thank you.
All right, so I will start with the packet component. And then I'm going to be turning things over to Mary Clarkson for special ed and ELL. And she will be supported afterwards by Ledry and Roby if needed. And so, well, I would certainly prefer that all of our parents and families, since we have the technology, we're going to be using the technology component. We have parents and families that would prefer not to. And so we really aren't in a position to force them to do that. There may be Wi-Fi issues. We may not have gotten output to everybody in terms of a hotspot. There also may just be a preference not to have their students on as much screen time. And so what we decided at the start of this situation is we were well aware that some kids were going to be advantaged by this situation and some kids were going to be disadvantaged. And our goal, knowing that with eight days to plan, is to put all of our minds collectively on setting up as many systems to not make our gap worse between students who might succeed in this system and students who might not. And so knowing that, we worked really hard and Dr. Roby worked with her team to create some pretty significant in-depth standard packets. And while they are not the same level of full instruction that occurs with a teacher using an online video lesson or a meeting back and forth, those packets are aligned to the standards of what's happening within our classrooms and within our schools on a daily basis. With that, our parents, or I mean, our paraprofessionals and our teachers are following up with those students. The non-online students in doing that on the telephone, making sure that they are receiving instruction from a teacher over the phone and/or individualized support from a paraprofessional over the course of time. And so while it isn't what we might envision with online, we didn't feel like we could tell a family, you don't want a Chromebook, you don't want to do it this way, we're not going to educate you, so we're going to do anything and everything. And that's kind of obviously, as you know, the board vision. I mean, it makes people's jobs harder. But that's the challenge that we have set out for ourselves is our job is to do anything and everything we can to meet the needs of our students and families. And so that's the way we've chosen to do that. Dr. Clarkson, Mary, I'm going to turn things over to you to talk about special ed and IEPs and also ELL. So Mary will tap in right now.
Good evening, everyone. I can give you an update on both ELL and special education. Our special education teachers have been working diligently over the last two to three weeks, coming up with plans for meeting with their students and collaborating with their general education teachers. Each special education teacher is working closely with one of our paraeducators. one of our paraeducators. And the direction is that they have personalized contact daily with each one of their students on their caseloads, and are working individually with them. In some cases, students that have a greater level of need will be provided work boxes or more manipulatives. And we're working on putting together how to continually bring those materials or get those materials to the families. But there's daily contact with each of, either their case manager or the paraprofessional that is working in conjunction and under the direction of the case manager. For our ELL staff, our English language learning teachers, Kasia has been providing some guidance and direction for our support staff there or our teachers there. They are collaborating with the general education teachers and have taken guidance from MDE. And there's also a network of coordinators that have been working on what's the best way to provide those services. There are some standalone classes at the secondary level that our English language learner teachers are providing some direct instruction in that elementary. It's trying to make the lessons more accessible. So they're coming in after the lessons are being created and coming up with ways to scaffold that instruction for our students. So it's a work in progress. But I can say that they have been working as teams since we've gotten the direction that we were moving towards distance learning. All of our speech clinicians, our OTs, our PTs are working as teams to figure out what the best delivery model is to ensure that the students that need those resources and services are getting them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal?
Okay. So one of the benefits of being last in the rotation is that most of my big questions have already been asked by other board members. So thank you. The one thing that I was hoping that you might just speak to is where we are in the process of determining how grades are going to work, especially for our secondary students, given the very unusual reality that we're in, whether it extends for the rest of the school year or whether it is just through the beginning of May.
So Dr. Roby has actually been working with the secondary team of Dr. Heinz and Dr. Daniels. What they have done is they have checked in with a wide range of other schools and districts around us to determine what are the best practices around grading. As you know, we currently have a board policy that defines that there's only a certain amount of pass/fail grades that a student is able to have. And so what we are looking at, and we anticipate having a recommendation coming from the three doctors team by Monday of next week at our cabinet level, they're looking at something along the lines of a likely AF typical grading as a choice, and the possibility of also pass/fail as a choice. And they're kind of looking at what the details of that might look like. What some districts have done is they've gone entirely to pass/fail. There are some districts that are staying AF. And there are some districts that are providing a choice to their students or providing flexible grading where a student can get to the end of the quarter, look at what their grade sits and decide, do I want AF or do I want pass/fail, and allowing them to make that decision at the end. And so those are kind of the three things people are looking at. My general preference and the philosophy that would align to the way the governor has behaved and the way we have behaved would likely be providing options for our students between the AF and the pass/fail. We just want to make sure we're doing our diligence prior to coming to the board. And if so, we would ask for a temporary policy change or a waiver of that policy based on whatever recommendation that is brought to our leadership team by Dr. Roby and Dr. Daniels and Heinz for next Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so having gone through our student board members and other board members once, now I'm just going to do a final open call for any comments and questions if there is something that has come up since you had your initial turn. So make sure you go off mute if there's anything that you'd like to add.
I just had a question. I was going to kind of ask, but I guess this is more like opinion based. Like, do you guys think we'll be able to go back to school? Or since they like, since they shut down like lakes and everything, like they're going to shut down school and graduation and all that, too?
That is a million dollar question, Diani. And Superintendent Yunowski and I chatted a little bit about it today. Steve, do you want to share your current thinking if you had a crystal ball?
I think it's really hard. I know that, I think that the governor will weigh health over 12th graders and their feelings. I know that I have my own feelings about it, both for our graduating class and for our school and for our district. My hope is that we are coming back. And my hope is that we have at least the last two weeks of school. But I will obviously let wiser heads or wise heads prevail in regard to health because that is their expertise area and not mine. So that's my hope. I think we're going to know a lot more because the shelter in place comes off as of the 10th. And so the governor will probably be talking to us around Wednesday of this week to give the first update. And we would probably hear something, obviously, before the end of April about schools. And so I'm hopeful. But sorry, I don't have a clean answer.
Crystal, this is Pete. I have a comment to make.
Great. Thank you.
So I think one thing that's really important for folks to recognize is that the shelter in place order and the very, I think, pretty aggressive action that the governor has taken to protect Minnesotans is working. If you look at the daily numbers that are coming from the Minnesota Department of Health, what you see in Minnesota is a curve that is quite flat. And so each day, we're, you know, over the last week, we're getting anywhere from 45 to maybe 75 new cases. But the rate of those new cases is just sort of bouncing around in that range. We're not seeing this sort of significant growth in the rate of new cases. And so we have evidence that this is working. And we know it will take weeks for that sort of, you know, given the incubation period of the virus, it'll take weeks to sort of have things kind of move through and see where we're going to go. So my hunch would be that the governor will tell us on April 10th that he's extending things a little bit, and we'll sort of see how it goes. But as tough as it can be, Diani, and you know, boy, we sure feel for you, it's important for us to recognize that this is working.
Thank you for sharing that perspective, Pete. I think it's incredibly helpful, even while we know it is so hard, especially for our seniors and other young people. Any other additional comments or questions around distance learning or the things that we've talked about in this conversation? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Steve, I will turn it back to you for the second item in the superintendent update.
All right. So that provides the first opportunity for Mr. Hulsey to jump off of mute and jump in with a budget update. So Craig, tap in.
Very good. Thank you. One of the things we know in a time of change and challenge is that routine is important. And so one of the items we have tonight is our routine budget update that just gives a highlight of where we are at the end of February for that budget update. This update is actually comparing to the revised budget that the board approved recently. When we look at the year-to-date as of February 29, 2020, that percentage of expenditure as it relates to the revised budget, and then previous years, take a look at how that is to the actual received at the end as part of the audited review. So when we look at our revenue, we are at 60% of revenue year-to-date with February. Last year, at that same time, we were at 58%, so very much on track. When we look at our expenditures by object series, similarly, we're at 55.4% of our expended, of our revised budget expended. Last year, our actual end of year, we were at 57% on February 29. So very much in line with where we've been other years at this time. And so we are running on track for a balanced budget in that area. We do know that there are a few things that are coming up with some that are going to change, especially some of our revenue projections within our Fund II and our community education fund. So those are things that we are watching and monitoring as we move forward through this. And then just one highlight at the end, when you look at the summary, all funds on the end of the second page, and looks at summary, the spending variance each one of these years from 2018, 2019, and in the revised budget, the biggest changes within those really are within the construction budget. So in 2018, we received revenue for construction, hadn't started spending it. So that's why we have that large revenue change over expenditure. Last year in 2019, we obviously started spending down that construction revenue. And then we're seeing more investments in that this year. So that really highlights where we are with our current end of year or current February 29 in comparison to the budget. And if there are questions, I can respond to that.
Thank you, Craig. I absolutely agree how important it is to have routine, and especially to continue to keep a very close eye on our finances, given the unusual times that we are in. So again, I will do one round of calling on board members individually to see if there are questions or comments for Craig, or of course, Steve may also chime in. Paula?
No comments.
Christine?
I don't have anything either. But thank you, Craig, for keeping that routine up.
Tim?
No comments, sorry.
Okay, Pete?
This is a question that is slightly off topic from the budget, but mainly just to get a sense from Craig. Can you give us a reminder of when we're going to be taking a look at enrollment projections?
So we've been building enrollment projections, and the fiscal planning advisory committee has been reviewing those. We have that information, and we're building that into the current year budget. We can bring that back to the board for review if we'd like to do that as well.
Yep. One, just one observation that I guess I'd like to make is I'm just recalling the last, last time we had a significant economic downturn, which would have been in the 2008 recession, we did see a surge in enrollment on the basis of that effect on the economy. And so I would advise that we take a look back at 2008, that eight, nine type of timeframe to get a sense, you know, I'm having this anticipation that we may see a very similar effect. In fact, I would, I would tend to guess we would see a more dramatic effect of folks moving towards the public, the public school option as they're economically and psychologically kind of hunkering down.
So if I may comment, we are definitely taking a look at that and monitoring. One of the things that we are facing right now is a challenge of enrollment coming in at this time when there is limited access. And so we're working within our enrollment procedures, especially with our kindergarten and our pre-K programs, to make sure that they continue to have access, even if they can't be coming into our schools and filling out paperwork and things like that. So we do have a committee working on rolling that out with a remote enrollment option available to them, and are close to having that available. But we'll certainly be taking a look at that when we're in our staffing process, and then trying to be more flexible in watching our staffing over the summer as things kind of roll together in August as well.
Great, thank you. I really appreciate the nod towards flexibility, because obviously the one thing that we all are experiencing is uncertainty right now. So I think that is a wise move. Thank you. I'm good.
Great. Allegra? No questions or comments. Okay. I am good as well. Just want to give a moment in case Diani or Naomi have any questions on this topic. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, good.
That's awesome.
Okay. And then having gone through all of the board members once, again, final open call for any additional comments or questions. I see Tim is off mute. Do you have something, Tim? No, I thought that was the signal. Okay, got it.
No, sorry. I switched back to mute. It's complicated.
It is complicated. We're all learning. And I don't see or hear any other comments or questions from board members. So thank you, Craig. Thank you, Steve, for the update. And we will move on to the next section of our agenda, which is the consent agenda containing routine business items. As this is another routine item, I will not individually call on board members, but rather we'll just pause to see if there are any questions or requests before we would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, seeing and hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Some.
I'm going to give that to Christine. Who wants the second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Mr. Tensing. Any discussion? We will conduct a roll call vote to approve the consent agenda. Cole?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Paulus?
Aye.
Mechek?
Aye.
Tensing?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and the consent agenda is approved. So we move into new business and have a couple of essential business items before us for the first time this evening. The first is a resolution that will allow us to continue meeting virtually until further notice, given the COVID-19 pandemic. So I will turn it over to our staff to share a little bit more about this resolution.
So looking at what has been done in districts across the state, the Minnesota School Boards Association has come up with some statutory language that allows us to make sure that we are able to function as a school board and that we are able to function appropriately, while obviously not being in the same room. So this is in line with statute 13D dot 021, meetings by telephone and other means. And it has been approved by the governor and is approved for us to move forward with. And so the couple of things that change, obviously, is we are not now in the same location. So we are able to conduct our meetings in this way. Well, this meeting and the previous one had very little typical presentations. We are working our way through the effectiveness of our ability to meet in this methodology, after which we'll actually try to get back to more normal meetings in terms of some of the additional presentations that we had. We are working to have this live stream. So Scott currently is live streaming this on YouTube as we speak. And so I am being beamed as I speak to the millions watching nationwide. It also will be on our typical YouTube channel, which allows for people to stream this in the future. And then as far as public comment, we will look at how we do that in relation to, in relation to the things that we do in the future. Just seeing a quick text from Scott, we actually have seven people. So hello to our seven viewers out there who are actually watching the live stream of this particular meeting. And so what we want to do is present this resolution, which will allow the board then to function as the typical school board, except in the lovely picturesque methodology by which we are doing now. So with that, Crystal, I'll turn it back for questions, or if you all choose to vote.
Okay, so I will, again, call on board members individually to see questions or comments that exist about the resolution as written. Paula?
No comments.
Christine?
I would just add what we discussed, I discussed with you earlier. I think having public comment up to one minute before the meeting might be a challenge in this format. So maybe giving our, giving us a couple of hours or something like that, so that you have time to organize that and have them, whether it's a recording or whether they actually join the meeting and give their presentation or ask their questions or make their comments. I think a little more than one minute would be helpful.
Yep, I agree. I'll share more when I get to my turn. Tim?
Same thing as Christine, the one-minute sound stuff, you know, with getting invites out and things like that.
Great. Peter?
I'm good. Thank you.
Allegra?
No comment.
Okay. I fully echo what Christine and Tim shared. I think we want people to be able to participate and continue to do public comment, but logistically, just each of us getting our own setup going leading up to the meeting and knowing that people can't do so in person. What I would suggest is that we strike from this resolution, the mention of one minute. And then what we're going to need to do is actually go to our existing public comment policy because the policy, because the existing public comment policy says one minute prior to the board meeting, if memory serves. So I think we should strike the mention of time from this particular resolution, which still tells people to get in touch with me. And then simultaneously, we can, as we talked about with the grading a few minutes ago, potentially do a temporary change to policy that would put something more like a couple of hours in place, just to make sure that we have the technology to support anybody who does want to make public comment. So that is my suggestion. Steve, is that something that feels okay from a district level perspective?
Absolutely. We wrote this resolution aligned to the current language of board policy. And so if you would like to, if somebody would like to make a motion on this and adjust the one minute to one hour, or whatever you would prefer, we certainly could then adjust the language in the resolution and then also come back at the next meeting with a waiver.
Okay. I, so given that we are having people get in touch with me, I think I personally would like to have more than one hour, just to make sure that I can be responsive. And I see Christine smiling and nodding, having met board chair previously. Do you think we could change it to noon on the day of the board meeting?
We can change it to whatever you think. So we are happy to have it at noon on the day of the board meeting and that would allow Mary Island to coordinate, no problem.
Okay. So that would be, that would be my suggestion. When we get to the point where we will make a motion here momentarily, if somebody would feel so moved to do so with that amendment, I think it's something that it sounds like the board collectively would be comfortable with. Diani or Naomi? Any questions or comments from you on this one before we reopen it back up for the whole group?
I think I'm good. I'm good as well.
Okay, thank you both. So again, one final open call for any comments or questions before we take action. Okay, seeing or hearing none, can we entertain a motion to approve the resolution as amended?
I will move the resolution as amended.
I'm second.
I will second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Malick and a second by Ms. Cole. I believe she just edged out Mr. Paulus for that one. Any final discussion?
Just making sure that we are 100% clear, so I'm repeating it for Mary taking notes. And so the resolution is being voted on, approved, with noon being the language around the time that public comment would have to be into the board chair.
Noon, the day of the board meeting, contacting me. And I know my contact information is already in the resolution. Great. As this is a resolution, we will do a roll call vote here. Cole?
Aye.
Malick?
Aye.
Paulus?
Aye.
Smieszek?
Aye.
Tensing?
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the resolution as amended is approved. So our next few items are related to our facilities work. First is a change order for work underway at Centennial Elementary School. Mr. Holgie?
Okay, thank you. And what I can do, if the chair is inclined, I can present all three of these together, respond to any questions on all of them, and then you can take action.
That sounds fantastic, thank you.
Okay. So the first one is a change order to Centennial Elementary. It is our first change order. With this, there was some additional cost to construct a masonry enclosure for, for Xcela Energy requirements, totaling $22,746.34 in additional expenditures on that project. Again, that one is just starting and being implemented. The second item is change order number 18 to Richfield STEM School. This is for a net change of $24,747.2, in particular related to mechanical and electrical revisions to the air handling unit number seven for motorized isolation valve and for the chiller and miscellaneous patching. And then the third item is change order number 18 for Richfield High School with an increase of $18,855.90. Again, we date addressing some expansion tanks, irrigation tanks, overflow storm draining modifications, some lighting control modifications, and some other existing repairs to insulation and things on the roof. So that's $18,855.90. So with that, I can respond to questions on any one of those as best I can. Otherwise, I'd ask the board's approval.
Okay, thank you, Craig. So again, board members, you'll each have a chance for any questions or comments related to any of these three distinct change orders that we will be taking action on. Paula?
No comments.
Christine?
Nope, it all looks very straightforward. I have no questions.
Tim?
I have no questions.
Peter?
I'm good, thank you.
Allegra?
No questions.
Diani or Naomi?
No questions.
Still.
I kind of assumed you'd be okay, but I didn't want to leave you out on the off chance that you had questions about any of these or anything that you wanted to share. So having gone through all board members once, any just final call for questions or comments before we take these one by one? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we could entertain a motion to approve the change order for Centennial Elementary School.
I will move approval of the Centennial Change Order number one.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Ms. Malick and a second by Mr. Paulus. Any further discussion? We'll conduct a roll call vote. Cole?
Aye.
Malick?
Aye.
Paulus?
Aye.
Smieszek?
Aye.
Tensing?
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the change order is approved. Next, we will go to the change order for the Richfield STEM School. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Smieszek and a second by Mr. Paulus. Any final discussion? Conducting the roll call vote for this change order at Richfield STEM School. Cole?
Aye.
Malick?
Aye.
Paulus? Did I miss you, Tim? Paulus?
Oh, aye.
Thanks. Smieszek?
Aye.
Tensing?
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the change order is approved. And then last but not least is the change order for Richfield High School. Do we have a motion?
I will move the change order for Richfield High School as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Malick. Any final discussion? Conducting the roll call vote for this one. Cole?
Aye.
Malick?
Aye.
Paulus?
Aye.
Smieszek?
Aye.
Tensing?
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the change order is approved. So I believe that brings us to the final item of new business, which are donations to the district that have been made in recent weeks. Superintendent Unowski?
Absolutely. So we're excited to, as always, receive support from our generous community, recommending that we accept the following donations with gratitude. Richfield High School received $250 from Mark and Kathy McReed to support the marching band. Thank you to Mark and Kathy. The Sunshine Fund received donations of $485 to give Minnesota from the following people. Kimberly Larson, $100. Michelle Burnside, $25. Lisa Ferrara, $10. And Anonymous, $350. So thank you for your support of the Sunshine Fund.
So as this is another of our routine business items, I won't individually call on board members, but rather we'll pause to just do an open moment of time in case there are any questions or comments. Okay, seeing and hearing none, is there a motion to approve the donations as presented?
I move to approve the donations and accept them with lots of gratitude.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I will second.
A motion by Ms. Cole and a second by Ms. Malick. Tim just keeps getting beat out at the buzzer. Any discussion? So we will conduct a roll call vote. Cole?
Aye.
Malick?
Aye.
Paulus?
Aye.
Smieszek?
Aye.
Tensing?
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the donations are accepted with gratitude. So we will move into advanced planning, as always, beginning with a legislative update. I know we've touched on a few items already, but still, Tensing, I will look to you to start and then see if there's anything Superintendent Unowski would like to add as far as legislative happenings.
Yeah, I actually don't have too much. Everything that I've been aware of from AMSD has been very much COVID focused. And I think it really just touches on the items that have already been mentioned that I'm aware of. Any further add to Steve?
The couple of big things that I would want us all to remember as a board, because Craig talked about our budget and we have created some COVID-19 line items in our budget. And so the governor is updating everyone. And so, Diani, if you wanted to watch, the governor is updating on a conference call at 2 o'clock, just about every day, and it's televised. And then the Department of Education is having a distance learning call twice a week for superintendents. And so what we have learned is, is that there is full funding of schools continuing. However, there is an interesting hole in regard to revenue that has not been figured out quite yet. And so areas where we receive revenue or fees are areas where we are very closely tracking revenue versus expenditures for the future. A couple of the obvious examples, some of our lunch is paid for by user fees. And so we are anticipating a relatively significant reduction in our revenue over the course of this period of time, because we are budgeted and staffed for the typical amount of lunches that we serve, which is about 2,500 breakfasts and 2,500 lunches. And even though we are having a large amount of meals served, it is nowhere near that amount. And so there will be a gap between the funding we typically receive and the expenditures that we have. We're also seeing some similar pieces in regard to community education, something that is also user fees based. And so the thing for the board to be aware of, and what we are working on legislatively is, how will we as a state support things related to user fee funded based roles? And what will we do as a district in that regard? And those are things we are tracking and monitoring and will be looking to make some recommendations in the future. But we're also talking very directly to our legislators and above us to talk to them about, you know, there are some areas where we don't expect the revenue that we had had in the past. That would be all.
Thank you. I'll just do an open call for any additional comments or questions from the board about legislative items before we move on.
I would just comment, I kind of brought something up when you talked about the community ed. So have we, I know the district has a lot on their plate, so maybe this is a little too much, but have we considered maybe taking advantage of online learning for any of our community ed classes that we have, if anything is particularly conducive to that format?
Yes, we have been working. And Carol McNotten Commerce has been working with Dr. Roby, and they are creating and working for things that do work in that regard from an online perspective. So we are, we are doing that to the greatest extent we can figure out. But obviously, there are a lot of classes that aren't going to be running and trying to figure out what you do in terms of staffing specifically, because our largest expenditures, we talk about it often in the school district, is staffing. What do you do for staffing when you aren't able to collect user fees? And so that's some of the conversations we're having, and that's what we are advocating for with our legislators to see what we can do.
All right. I do not see or hear other legislative comments, so we will move next into information and/or questions members of the board would like to share with each other. And so I will call on each board member individually here as well, in case there is anything people would like to share. Paula?
Not for now.
Okay. Christine?
I would just share that we had the Construction Oversight Committee meeting this past week, and we did it much like this, although I think we did Zoom, or no, we didn't do Zoom. But anyway, it was online. But it was, again, informative. I learn something every time I go to these meetings. They are really doing a good job, I think, of kind of planning ahead and looking forward. There are some, some unknowns out there for them, but they're in the buildings and doing construction. Not all, all of the contractors, all of the contractors are still working. Some of the crews are a little smaller, possibly related to anyone that might be ill or having smaller groups to maintain social distancing while they work. They are moving up some of the things and taking advantage of time without the students in the building, but also being very mindful of the fact that there's a chance that the students could still be coming back, so they aren't completely tearing it apart so that they can't have students back in the building. So I think they're being very thoughtful in their process and in their planning. And, but I think things may get a little boosted moving along because of their, kind of their careful planning. So that is all I have.
Thank you. Tim?
I have, the Spartan Foundation has canceled, has postponed its June golf event and moved it to late August. So that was, that was something that was decided recently. So that's something I know I had circled on the calendar. So anyway, the summer events are starting to be shifted, if, in many cases canceled outright, but this one was shifted for now.
Thank you. Pete?
I am good, thank you very much.
Okay. Allegra?
Thank you, Director Malick. I was wondering about construction yesterday as I passed the high school on our daily extended family walk, so I appreciate that update. I don't have anything else.
Diani? Is there anything you'd like to share?
I'm good as well, thank you.
Okay. And Naomi?
I'd just like to say thanks for being so like dedicated and thorough when like doing all the stuff with e-learning. So that's it.
Thank you. I know that would mean a lot to staff members to hear you say that. I just, you know, echo the appreciation that's already been shared for our teachers on this first day of distance learning, but also wanted to give a very, very special shout out to Scott Nelson and Mary Island, who have helped us with the technology for this board meeting and enabling us to be able to actually pull this off and to have it be streamed in real time. So Scott, Mary, thank you. Also, thanks to Aaron Donar, tech team, for helping me get my laptop up to date so that I could do this meeting from my kitchen. So lots of staff members working behind the scenes to make this possible. And then also, of course, to all of our staff who are with us here tonight from their homes as well. Okay, our second meeting of the month of April will be on Monday, April 20. And as we talked about, we'll begin with public comment. If there is a member of the public who would like to address the board, please get in touch with me by noon on that day, Monday, the 20th. And then our first meeting of May will be on Monday, May 4. Finally, I'll ask individual board members if there are any items that you would like to request for discussion on an upcoming agenda. As Steve shared, we're getting our legs under us a little bit in this new reality and will begin having more of our usual in-depth discussion topics in the future. So this is the time to request anything that you're, you know you're eager to talk about in the coming weeks and months. Paula, is there anything on your mind?
There's a lot in my mind, but nothing for the next meeting right now. I'm sure something will come up.
I know how you feel. Christine?
I feel the same way as Paula, but, and I would say you covered my next question, which was going to be, things back into gear for our routine items that we can do. I feel like the past two meetings, we've cut out a lot, or we've minimized a lot, and I kind of want to make sure we don't get too far behind, that's all.
Yep, absolutely. Tim?
I have nothing.
Peter?
I have nothing as well.
I have nothing as well.
Allegra?
I mentioned assessment earlier, so I'll just look forward to that.
Great. Diani?
I'm good, thank you.
Naomi?
I'm also good.
And then Steve, I want to give you a moment to share any final thoughts before we move to adjourn.
I just thank everyone and thank everyone on Team Richfield. We have really proven that we, as Richfield Public Schools, are up to the challenge and I'm proud of every single member of this organization, every staff, every student, every board member, every community member for all of their work. And so I'm proud and impressed, and I couldn't be more happy with the work that everybody has put in, so thank you all.
Well said. The final item of business on the agenda is to adjourn, and as people have shared with me in the past, it doesn't actually require a full vote, and so I am finally going to use that power. And I am just going to officially adjourn the meeting as board chair at 8:08 PM. Have a good evening, everyone. Stay safe and stay well, and we will see you on Monday, April 20th. Good night.